Evening, welcome to the council meeting for April 1st. Anyone in the audience needs amplified headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. And not seeing any, let's write some questions.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I don't think you do a roll call.
Here.
Councilmember Stern.
Here.
Councilmember Fillmore.
Here.
Mayor Nescot.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sapp.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. Council members have any late changes to the agenda? Your manager?
Late changes, Mr. Stern?
Council members have more information, Chair?
I had the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board last week, and though I don't have a case today, I will have some announcements on April 15th.
Moving on. Has the council read the consent agenda? Your motion to approve it is published?
Mr. Mayor, would you approve the consent agenda as published?
Second.
Right, we have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Right. The council invites the public to make public comment on matters of city business shall be made in the entire council, not individual council members. Please refrain from any personal disrespectful remarks that create disruption to the meeting. If unreasonable disruptive conduct continued, we will leave. Donna, anyone sign up for the comment?
Yes, there is, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Dean Jewett.
Good evening, always a pleasure to be here. Let's talk about the $20,000 that was given to Community Lifeline when we fully well knew that they were 200, 300,000 in the hole, okay? What else could that money have gone for? On top of that, $30,000 went when Jeff Knight was here. Okay, there's $50,000. Okay, let's talk about funding. We have a couple of individuals in our council here that, uh, we voted, we voted down a tax for homeless, for 0.01%, whatever it was. It went to a councilmatic approach because they didn't think they would get public support. Now it goes to councilmatic support, they voted down. Now, the two individuals that had a five, 10-minute tirade at the end of that have now tried to put it onto the agenda, it's going to go on the ballot for vote again. How much does that cost us? So 20, 30, another 10, add it up, so now we got 60 grand. It's not your money, it's our money. So, no thank you. Uh, let's talk about the tents, the graffiti, the ADA violations. We got Recovery Cafe that was completely blocking the sidewalk for how long? Mark and I have gone head to head on ADA violations already. So that took multiple weeks to get that cleared off, it's already building back up. So if we would have cleared it when people called in, what's the difference between then and two weeks later? Did laws change, something else change? I don't know. Why wasn't it cleared as soon as it was brought to people's attention? I guess it's a mystery. Tagging on a local building, right Brewer Park. It's disgusting. People pay a lot of money for their businesses and to have this stuff just willy-nilly not anything being done about it, it's beyond ridiculous. Uh, we have camps being reported, then I get lackluster responses from our city manager about RCWs and not being on the property, it's not theirs, it's the Navy's. They don't have a letter, but yet a letter was sent to our sheriff. So we have two municipalities that don't talk to each other. So we don't have a copy of that letter, so now we've got three, four weeks of these camps being within 100 yards of multiple businesses. It's ridiculous. I also caught somebody tagging and had him arrested. How much did that cost us to clean up? Uh, you have volunteers cleaning up things that the city and the county should have, and they're not. Obviously, I don't have enough for all these, all these, uh, notes that I have. Uh, so we have, uh, we have, uh, we need a proactive approach. We know the areas that have the problems. We need to go by there and we need to take care of those. Don't wait for somebody to call in, let's be proactive and get it taken care of. Let's clean up our community, take care of our businesses, and make sure that this is a place that tourists and stuff want to come into. Not to mention spies being sent out so they can drive by and look at people's businesses and see what they're doing or not doing. Mr. Nescot?
Our next speaker is Susan Kirchhoff.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Susan Kirchhoff, I'm the Director of the Youth Connection, serving young people aged 13 to 24 in Shelton and Belfair. Our mission is to support and uplift youth, particularly those experiencing homelessness, by providing essential services and outreach. In March alone, our impact was very significant. 467 young people signed into our center. That's 467 youth off the street and doing something productive. We served 240 hot meals and we handed out 47 bags of food and other essential supplies. Beyond direct services, we are actively involved in the community engagement. Our outreach includes maintaining the Teresa Johnson Trail and as well as the skate park while identifying and connecting with young people in need. Our housing approach has highly been effective, we have an 86% success rate in preventing young people who are homeless from returning back into homelessness. Last month, we successfully secured permanent housing for three individuals. Statistics show approximately 1 in 10 adults aged 18 to 25 are going to experience homelessness each year, and 1 in 30 youth aged 13 to 17 face homelessness annually. This number is only perpetuated the longer that we are not able to connect with them, which is why our services are so important, that we prevent chronic homelessness. Collaboration is part of the heart of our projects and our approach to the everything. We actively build relationships with other nonprofit organizations by offering free required training sessions. We just hosted two of them in March, one trauma-informed training, one motivational interviewing with the power of listening. Additionally, we celebrated Women's History Month by hosting a Women Empowering Women event on March 28th. Each month, we address culturally relevant issues to foster awareness and inclusivity. February, we highlighted Black History Month. March, again, we highlighted the women in our community. In April, we are partnering, um, doing, doing Things Differently event to bring awareness to Child Abuse Prevention Month, which we're hosting with Turning Point, Family Education Support System, and the host program at the YMCA. And that is, just for everybody to know, April 26th is Saturday from 2:00 p.m. to noon. And May 17th, we're doing our annual Mardi Gras. At the Youth Connection, we are committed to being a solution-driven organization dedicated to making a meaningful difference in our community. We approach our, sorry, approach, see, that's what I skinned. We appreciate your support and look forward to continuing our collaboration to improve the lives of young people in Mason County. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Our next speaker is Catherine Johnson.
Hello, thank you, council members. My name is Catherine Johnson, I am the Executive Director of the Humane Society of Mason County. I just wanted to come before you today and make sure to show presence that I am here to really emphasize the commitment that Humane Society of Mason County has to all of Mason County, including the City of Shelton. We work, we want to work even closer with the City of Shelton Shelter, helping decrease the length of stay on dogs at the shelter. We have a robust foster program as well as online sheltering program that really helps us make sure that animals are posted on as many websites as possible and as quickly as possible to get them into their new homes. We also partner with Mission Creek Correction Center in Belfair, the women's prison, to foster animals there. And that has been a really robust program for us. And it's been so successful that the Shelton Men's Prison has been asking us to start up a program there as well as they are really excited about potentially having some dogs out there. So, we are here to help and we've sent a proposal to the city to help with the shelter. We know that we have a lot of our programming that already exists that could be implemented immediately to help decrease the length of stay on the dogs in the shelter and help more dogs find homes quicker. So, we do all of our efforts through our facility in Belfair currently, where we have a low-cost span neuter clinic that provides surgery four days a week. We do approximately 35 surgeries a day. This month, we will complete our 10,000th span neuter surgery since opening in 2022. We are very proud of that. We have, we work very diligently to provide low-cost veterinary services and low-cost span neuter services to residents of Mason County. Our facility, we have eight full-time staffs, two part-time staffs that work to take care of all of the Mason County animals in our care as well as run our low-cost veterinary services. Those staff are professionals and dedicated to caring for animals of Mason County. We are a no-kill shelter, which means we maintain a greater than 90% save rate. Our current save rate is 97%. We take in a lot of very sick injured animals from Mason County and we are very proud that our veterinary staff can care for them.
I was here at the last meeting and I brought up the situation that we have over Second and Coda. And I really wanted to come in here today and say that I appreciate what I've seen just in the last few days. Um, at first, I didn't really understand because I saw people with flipboards, I saw integrated healthcare mobile vans out there and I wasn't sure what was going on. But now I'm getting to where I realize that they are offering help to these people and then if they are not accepting the help, I think what happened on Saturday is what happens. And I think the last few people that were camping there were escorted away by the police. Um, it lasted one day, but it was one nice day. Um, not any activity going on over there. But like Dean just said, that it started up again, there's a couple of vans out there already. Um, a tarp and a cardboard structure already. So, I did want to say that I appreciate that. It's important to me, my employees' safety, my customers' safety. But it is also what I see over there, is I see women by themselves over there and really young adults. I saw a young man over there that was probably not, barely 18. Um, I think he was probably about 18, that was either totally out of it on drugs or he was very mentally ill. And to me, that's really sad and really scary. Um, and so I want to stay involved because I see what's going on. I have tried to do some research to figure out the mitigation and other things that we're talking about and I continue to do that. But I did want to say that I appreciate what has been going on over there. A few of you know me and I just want to say that you know how to get hold of me, if there is anything that I can do, I'll definitely seek you out and find out what kind of task forces are going, forces are going on and other things that we can do. I really love Shelton, I've been here for 15 years now, exactly. Um, I love this town and I want my family and my friends to be proud of it. And I think that we can get it there, I know it's going to be hard work, but there's a lot that still needs to be done. So, let me know what I can do to help and I do appreciate the things that have happened so far. Thank you.
We don't have anyone on the table?
We have some comments that will supply after the record and it'll be on our website. It's in support of Resilience Number 1350-0924 for Mid Block Crossing on Old Main Jr. High and it will be on our website. We want to read that letter of support from Paul Grove. Paul Grove. All right, next we have a presentation from Chief Costad about induction into law enforcement memorial.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. In 1936, Vice Marshal Lou H. Jacobs of the Shelton Police Department sustained fatal injuries while attempting to arrest brothers Ralph and Dwight Bondi who had been causing disturbance in downtown Shelton. On the 9th of August 23rd, 1936, the Bondi brothers had been asked to leave several local beer parlors. During the attempt to arrest the two on Railroad 1st Street, his blackjack was taken from him and Marshal Jacobs was struck multiple, multiple times in the head. If you don't know what a blackjack is, it's, it's a small leather weapon that's usually lead shot or powder contained with inside it, so it creates a very hard impact surface. We don't carry those anymore as of this day. His son Everett, who was nearby, ran to assist his father, was also struck and knocked unconscious. Marshal Jacobs was taken to the hospital where he remained for a week. He passed away from his injuries on August 30th, 1936. Bondi brothers responsible for the attack were arrested hours later at the Shelton place. It was Marshal Jacobs' death that showed the need for improved safety measures for law enforcement officers, prompting the Shelton Police Department to introduce uniforms for first night. Lou H. Jacobs was 67 years old at the time, dead. He survived by his wife, four daughters, four siblings, and eight grandchildren. Prior to serving as the night marshal for two years, he'd also served as the Mason County Sheriff, four years. On May 2nd, this year, Marshal Jacobs will be inducted into Law Enforcement Memorial in Olympia where law enforcement officers were killed in line of duty where they are recognized and remembered. In addition to his induction into the Law Enforcement Memorial, Vice Marshal Jacobs will be awarded the Medal of Honor most generously for his death while in the performance of his duty. The ceremony is open to the public, I'd like to invite you to attend. I will be there representing Vice Marshal Jacobs. Prior to the ceremony, there's a reception at 2:00 p.m. in the Columbia Room at the Capitol Building. The ceremony will begin at 4:00 p.m. at the law enforcement. We wish to hand, let me know, the city of the country, the state of Maryland, the arrangements. Happy to answer any questions, but you go ahead.
Is there any family member here? We're, Chief?
We are working on that. Even the amount of generations that has come past, it's quite a different track and there was name changes in the late 1900s. So, we're still working on that and trying to get a family member there. We're going to release, um, hopefully tomorrow, kind of a help cry to the, to the community via the Facebook and see if anyone knows the family history can help us in the right direction.
Thank you. All right, our first business item is a resolution about amending our agreement with WashDOT.
Mr. Mayor, one more presentation, please.
Oh, yes. Right. We have a proclamation for child abuse prevention. Whereas this city of Shelton recognizes our future rests in the hands of all, there is that of our children. And whereas, all children deserve to live in safe, stable, nurturing environments for healthy growth and development. And whereas, child abuse and other trauma recognize a serious public health problem affecting both the current and future quality of life of the community. And whereas, it is the responsibility of a community to ensure parents, caregivers, and other adults who are doing to the health and wellbeing of our children have the important knowledge and concrete resources necessary to ensure all children thrive in their greatest potential. And whereas, that children use prevention strategies to see, we had partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, healthcare providers, and the business community. And whereas, we as the City of Shelton residents continue our commitments protecting all members of the community and call upon all citizens coming together to increase public safety and better future use of our children. Now therefore, the City of Shelton best hereby proclaiming April 2025 a Child Abuse Prevention Month. The City of Shelton urges all citizens, communities, state agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, medical providers, educators, and businesses to increase participation in order to support families thereby preventing child abuse and striking in the community which we live. And I will sign this tonight. Does anybody care about these people on there? Chair?
I'm Roger Jones, I'm with FESS Family Education Support Services. We're a local nonprofit organization and we've recently relocated to the Shelton YMCA. We serve many local Shelton families annually. I extend our heartfelt appreciation for your proclamation recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month. Your leadership plays a crucial role in raising awareness and fostering a community dedicated to safety and well-being of our children. In Washington State, recent reports indicate that child fatalities related to maltreatment have been a significant concern. The state of Washington child abuse rate is 35 victims per thousand children. And that's what was reported. The pinwheel has become a national symbol for child abuse prevention. It represents the hope and joy of carefree childhood that every child deserves. We have helped to plant over 1,000 of these pinwheels across our tri-county service area in hopes that you will also consider, as leaders, planting one of your, in your area of business or your home for the month of April. We can all take steps to promote child well-being. Be informed. Learn more about the ways you can take, you can take to prevent child abuse. Support families. Other, offer assistance to families in stress. Volunteer. Engage your, with your local organizations dedicated to child welfare like FESS or Youth Connection. Well, advocate. Promote policies and initiatives that prioritize children's safety and well-being. And last, foster connections. Build strong, supportive relationships within the community to create a network of care for children and families. Your continued support and commitment are vital in our collective efforts to ensure every child in Shelton grows up in a safe, nurturing environment. Together, we can make a lasting difference in the lives of children and the future of our community. Thank you, and we hope that you will take a pinwheel. And Dean Wilberton, that's in our local office here, has pinwheels, we can set them here on the table if that's all right. And we also have a flyer about the different things we do for families and children. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions? That's the only people speaking. Right. Here's, thanks so much. Now, our first business item is a resolution about amending the agreement with WashDOT for street striping Public Works Director Jay Harris's details.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, Jay Harris, Public Works Director. So, every spring, the city has our road center lines, mediums, and fog lines repainted. The costs are in our yearly maintenance budget. The transportation benefit district and the general fund revenues support the striping costs. Prior to 2018, the city was using a contract striping company and there was a few years where it got late in the year, it started raining, they couldn't get the roads striped. And we went a whole winter without fresh paint. So, in 2019, the city contacted WashDOT and entered a five-year contract maintenance agreement with WashDOT to come in every year, typically it's sometime in May, June, it's weather dependent, right? To come in and re-stripe all our roads. It takes usually just about a day, sometimes a little bit longer, but usually they're out there a day with their striping machine, painting, all that. We have a system with traffic control at the same time. Um, so the, uh, this, from 2019 to 2023 was the agreement period for $62,000. The original agreement had in a clause in there that we had to pay for actual costs each year. So, WashDOT kept track of the costs and then we did add in a sixth year to this contract amendment, that was last summer. They put that on the old agreement from 2019. So, the total cost for the contract amendment is $103,000, just about $17,000 each year the roads have been striped. So moving forward, we decided we're not going to do like a five-year agreement. We just want to get billed each year, we budgeted around $20,000 to pivot for, in our maintenance budget for that work every year. So, each year, we're just going to have them come out, just sort of get into a contract each year. And the city manager signed it for $30,000. So you probably won't be hearing about our yearly striping again, but the goal is to get it done each year. And we found there's only a couple of people that come out to this area and they just, we weren't getting good service, it wasn't reliable. And so we got reliability at a really good price, too. There is one option potentially in the future that Mason County did buy a striping machine. They're learning how to run it this year and we'll see how that all comes around. And I talked to their Public Works Director, told them that we're running, you know, 17,000 to 20,000 a year and they weren't very interested when I gave them the amount because it's a lot of work to get done one year. I'm available for questions?
Donna, do I read in the resolution number 1366-1224?
Resolution number 1366-1224. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to execute the striping maintenance agreement, amendment number one, with the Washington State Department of Transportation.
We have motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to place resolution number 1366-1224 on the action agenda for further consideration at the April 15th council meeting, 2025.
All right, comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor, you're welcome.
The motion is second to place resolution number 1366-1224 on the action agenda for further consideration. Volunteers, aye?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. We now have a resolution for another contract amendment, Assistant Public Works Director, Trent Armstrong has more information for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Bernard Shon, Assistant Public Works Director. I'm bringing forward a contract amendment with Grain Osborne for the satellite reclaim water tank. This is amendment number five of a project that started redesign in 2018. Worked with an ILA Swaxton tribe to get further along the design in 2020. And this is the last contract amendment that will finalize some electrical and skating integration along with bid support and then follow all the way through construction support. Um, it's for a reclaimed tank that we, uh, in my 18 years here, we haven't built a new tank so we're bringing in an outside consultant that designed the tank to do construction management also. And, uh, $43,661 is the design efforts and get us through bidding. And then $280,000 in construction assistance. And it's also extending their contract through June of 2026. So hopefully, within a month or two, we come out with some quality bids and we can get the tank constructed.
Can you just really quick explain what the reclaimed water is?
Yeah, the reclaimed water tank is water that we produce out at our bed rain treatment wastewater treatment plant and it can be used for irrigation. We have it, uh, the Washington Correction Center uses it and it is plumped for some of their toilets. And it's used for a wide variety of uses, but it's reusing the water and then we can also use it to augment, um, at our spray field, it helps drain flows and it pulls real great.
Donna, can we read the resolution 1374-0325?
Resolution number 1374-0325. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to execute contract amendment number five with Grain Osborne Incorporated for design and construction assistance of the satellite wastewater treatment plant reclaimed water tank project.
Thank you, Donna. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to press resolution number 1374-0325 on April 15th, 2025. Council meeting action agenda for further consideration.
Okay.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
I'm always in favor of increasing the quantity and quality of water in the city and thank you for your efforts in bringing this forward and also working with the trust, thank you so much.
So we're going from like, what, a 40,000 gallon tank to half a million gallon tank?
Yeah, we'll get your capacity and say 10 times. Very, and it's your investment.
Well, in the future, we can run more pipes throughout the city. If we wanted to have like a manufacturing company, you need water that is not pollable water.
The membrane plant strategically positioned that near Sanderson Field where there's a lot of commercial industrial properties and what was referred to as a DRCI. I know the acronym, but it's the northwest portion of the city UGA, Highway one oh two, one oh two, near Correction Center. So that was incorporated into the UGA, I think, back in twenty seventeen, the comp plan amendment that specifically is zoned as an employment center for industrial and commercial development. Certainly, the availability of reclaimed water because it's much cheaper to purchase than pollable water, particularly for manufacturing purposes when you're not drinking it.
Do we spray it when we're not, when the tank's full right now?
Yeah, we have a spray field now, and so WCC, Washington Correction Centers, that's where they're located by the way, so. Any extra that we have to go through. That's great.
Right. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion, a second to place resolution number one, three, seven, four, dash, zero, two, five on April fifteenth, council meeting, action agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Right. Assistant Public Works Director Aaron Nix has information for us about pedestrian safety projects.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, thank you. Sorry, let me figure this out. This is one of the biggest projects that we have coming, forthcoming, all awarded with via grant money. What we've done is we've had to combine two projects because we utilized one project as our match for the other money that we were rewarded. So there's two projects. The first being systemic pedestrian improvement project. There's four intersections that we will be looking at, Olympic Highway North and High Street. Looking at the intersection improvements there. The mid-block crossing relocation at Olympic Highway South and Bellevue Avenue. Rapid flashing beacons at West Railroad Avenue and Third Street. And then the final is a traffic signal evaluation and options assessment at West Railroad Avenue and Seventh Street. We were awarded about one point three million dollars to do improvements to those pieces. The one improvement that would at least identify within that project is High Street intersection on Olympic Highway North. That's the, we are basically taking three hundred and eighty-eight thousand of that systemic project and using that as a match for the TIB grant that we got to basically repay all Olympic Highway North and deal with, it's a deteriorating road that has to get fixed very soon. So I don't have a resolution for you guys yet. We are in the process of getting local programs to approve and authorize us to move into design on these two projects. Also, I want to say about that. So in essence, we got about three point seven million. This is the other grant in the TIB grant. That's to completely dig up and help replace the roadway section. That, so there was two grants, systemic, and then the TIB grant. So in total, about five million dollars dedicated to doing these improvements. Because it's a federal project, we had to cross Ts, dot Is. We did in our queue process, we interviewed four consultants. Transpo Group, which is an outfit out of, I think they're out of Kirkland. I've worked with them a lot in my past, especially in Auburn and Redmond. They're very good. They know what they're doing and they're professionals. So again, I don't have a resolution. What we'd like to do is we will bring the resolution to you at the next meeting. If we can get this on the action agenda for your approval at that next meeting. So if you have any questions, ask.
Two clarifying points. TIB, Transportation Improvement Board, it's administered through Washington State Department of Transportation, so WASHDOT, so it's the grant administered through WASHDOT. So just try to remove acronyms, although I just use the DRCI, but I don't remember what it was because it's back in twenty seventeen. So Dayton Airport, it'll come to me at the last minute. And then the reason why we're bringing this to you today without the resolution is really timely. We don't want to miss a construction window next year. We're entering the construction window this year. We need to get design done. That's going to take, how many months, Aaron?
Probably a bit.
Yeah.
We're going to push this back. We want to hit this window, construction window. So that's June. We got to go on.
So we appreciate the council's consideration tonight. It's out the actual resolution in front of you. Again, the resolution will be to approve the contract for design. You will see this again at the time when it, before it goes out to bid and get an update on the, on the design itself as this moves through that process. And then we award a bid hopefully early next year, going into construction season. There's going to be a lot of public information because it's going to disrupt traffic, both pedestrian and vehicle traffic on Olympic Highway North next year. Thank you.
And candidly, Council, we don't believe this is enough money. And I, just being honest with you, because of the shape that the road is in, there's going to be a lot of digouts. You got to get down to the base, the base problem. So we're going to do everything we can to get at least the roadway fixed. In addition, if you're going to be doing those improvements, you have to do ADA improvements as well. So it's super expensive, obviously, flat work as well as, so thank you.
Oh, question, yeah. Give the motion, have a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I moved forward this agenda item and the addition of a resolution to the, and proposed contract to the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five action agenda for further consideration.
Thank you. All right, comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the work you've done around the city has been very good, especially down the railroad. And I really want to improve the road condition index of Olympic Highway, especially with all the traffic that goes through there. And it's kind of suffering. So we really need to get this done and to also add accessibility would be great for our mobility around the city. So I'd really like to move this forward and, you know, do the best you can with the least you can, but let's do this and let's get started desperately.
Do you have any comments or questions? That's kind of my question was, what do we do if it does come in over? Because obviously, we're going to be having a budget talk here also. Shake the product act or do it? What are the options?
Well, we have a commitment with the grant, so we have to meet that. We'll, we'll know more as the design is refined and we get construction estimates. So as they get through thirty percent design, we'll, we'll have more information on construction estimates. We'll see what the bidding climate is as we work through the design process, too. So at this point, we'll kind of put that discussion on hold and we'll have some more information next year because we just don't have enough until we really get into design.
Mayor, one of the things that we, we got to hire a geologist to get out there and we got a core out there and not just two-foot core. We're talking several feet. We believe it's a base problem. It's not necessarily. And I don't know if you guys know the history behind that road. Historically, I believe it was one-on-one at one point. It was concrete road. Painted over and over and over it. I think in nineteen ninety, maybe two thousand, something like that, they pulverized it. They basically bought a big thing out, dropped this wall on the concrete, basically break it up, make it, and then they painted over the top of it. That's where I'm thinking there might be some issues. So that's really what we need to do. And the geotechnical analysis is going to tell us much more as far as the extent of how deep.
All right. Our motion is second to forward this agenda item to the addition of resolution and proposed contract to the April fifteenth action agenda for the consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
My last business item is a resolution about a ballot proposition for the transportation benefits, TBD.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Following up after a couple of discussions regarding the Shelton Transportation Benefit District, I'll provide you a little bit of history. So back in May of twenty fifteen, the Shelton Commission, City Commission established the Shelton Transportation Benefit District, and this is a funding mechanism per RCW thirty-six seventy-three that allows for the transportation benefit to authorize a tax or a, in the form of a sales tax or a license tab fee to be collected within the city limits to pay for transportation, maintenance, improvements, grant matches, things like that, systemic improvements, systemic preservation and maintenance. After that, the TB board authorized a ballot measure for November third of twenty fifteen. That passed at that time. The duration of the, the sales tax measure, excuse me, I'll go back. The ballot measure was to authorize a sales tax of two tenths of a percent within the city limits on the sales of goods and services for the term of ten years, and that's per the RCW. It has a limit of ten years. So with the approval on November third of twenty fifteen, after the election was certified in later November, notification of revenue, the, the tax was starting to be collected in twenty sixteen and February of twenty sixteen. Therefore, we're coming up against the expiration of that sales tax in February of twenty twenty-six. Again, as we briefed the council previously, with expiration of that sales tax, we, we had the opportunity to go back out to the voters to institute another ballot measure or put a ballot measure on the, on an upcoming election to, to impose a sales and use tax again. The council directed staff to develop a resolution at the study session last week to renew essentially the sales tax of two tenths of a percent for a ballot measure on August fifth. So you have a draft resolution in the packet today to review and consider to place on the April fifteenth council action agenda. I will reiterate that two tenths of one percent annually generates about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four. It was seven hundred and forty-one thousand, thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. That goes directly to our street fund, which is the two thousand twenty-five budget and operating budget for the street fund is just over two point three million dollars. So again, pays for operations, maintenance, some of the projects you heard about tonight as far as the striping, potential match funds for the systemic improvements, pedestrian improvements, and Olympic Highway North improvements, as well as the item you'll see on the action agenda, which is the crossing at Wall Street and Boulevard and OBJH. The council could consider, again, just for the public's information, a licensed tab fee on vehicles registered within the city limits only. But as, as directed last week, the two tenths of a percent sales tax was what we provided for within the resolution before you tonight.
Thank you, Mark. Donna, do I have a reading of resolution number one, three, seven, six, dash, zero, three, two, five?
Resolution number one, three, seven, six, dash, zero, three, two, five. A resolution of the city of, a resolution of the city of Shelton City Council providing for a ballot proposition to be submitted to the qualified electors to renew and continue to impose a sales and use tax upon all taxable retail sales and uses in the amount of two tenths of one percent for the purpose of financing transportation improvements.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to place resolution number one, three, seven, six, dash, zero, three, two, five on the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five action agenda for further considerations.
Second. Right. Comments or questions?
I think we should backs this out to go to point three percent, but I think the council would not forward that. So we will just hold serve, I think, and just put this forward to the voters at just replacement level to keep the funding in place for all our projects to leverage other projects in the future. Because our road condition index is going down and we need to do something about it. And I would, I would like to do more, but I think this is all that we could get past at this time.
Ten years ago, we've heard a lot about our roads in these meetings. I used to sit out there and listen to people come in and talk about roads a lot. And we could show that we've been very good stewards of this traffic benefit district. You know, we've got our first roundabout, we did North Cliff, we did Olympic Highway North, right? No, South. We did Jefferson Street, this is around the road. And there's many, 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 Brock, that was Brock.
Western Gateways.
Oh, yes, big one, Western Gateway all the way down to the city limits, Pacific Court, I believe, which is beautiful and brand new sidewalk. We, we've made very good use of this money, leveraging this money for grants, the state, or federal grants. For those out there, without these funds, our budget is online. And you can see that out of this seven hundred thousand dollars, we're also getting five hundred thousand dollars out of our general fund for also to support roads. And that is money that can be used for each supplier and just many administration costs. And if we have to use more of that money to roadwork, we're going to have a really tough, tough time. This, this is not a new tack. Renewed hack that we've been really good steward of. So I'm all for it. Do you have any comments? All right. We have a motion, a second to play resolution number one, three, seven, six, dash, zero, three, two, five on the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five action agenda for the consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we now have an action item. About safety improvements designed for mid-block crossing at Oakland Bay Junior High, Public Works Director Jake and Aaron. Or Assistant Public Works Director Aaron Nix has the details for us. I don't know where he came from.
Mayor, thank you. Council, I brought this to you at your last previous meeting. This is the, what we'd like to do is improvements to the mid-block crossing at Olympic, or excuse me, Olympic Oakland Bay International, that, that mid-block crossing there, the sign, it's been hit three or four times, bandaged together. What we'd like to do is enter into a design contract for a little under, it's about thirty-nine thousand dollars, to design some improvements out there and look for construction funding to get those things done. So again, I brought this to you before, the idea being we want to enhance the visibility of that area because it's kind of around a curve and improve it.
And full lane, full lane of traffic and people can't see everybody.
One person stops, the other one might rock. So that's, I understand that.
Donna, any type of public comment on this?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a reading of resolution number one, three, five, zero, dash, zero, two, four?
Resolution number one, three, five, zero, dash, zero, nine, two, four. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a public works on-call consultant roster work order to provide design and bidding services for a mid-block pedestrian improvement project.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution number one, three, six, zero, dash, zero, nine, two, four as presented.
The number is wrong.
Here we go. Want to restate it?
I move to adopt resolution number one, three, five, zero, dash, zero, nine, two, four as presented.
Yes.
Right.
Do we have a second, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Comments or questions?
It's hard enough. Definitely think any way we can help him get home safe, it's a good thing.
Yes, this is, I'm, I'm extremely excited about this, the study, because I'd like to see this fixed. I've been talking about this for, for many years. I used to call it Frogger. I guess kids are dodging cars over there. So I'm excited about it. Right. We have a motion, a second to adopt resolution number one, three, five, zero, dash, zero, nine, two, four as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Mark, do you have the manager report?
A few things for you tonight, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I want to follow up on the TBD discussion a little bit. On the city of Shelton's website, under Public Works and Transportation Benefit District, we have some great information, including an interactive map that shows where these projects have occurred. It shows the residential paving, turning dirt roads into, into paved roads just this last summer up on Capitol Hill on Fogarty and a couple of other streets. We are scheduling our paving for twenty twenty-five right now. It looks like that's going to be north or west of Olympic Highway North and some of that area there, but that's certainly, that's certainly being planned right now. That's, that's in a hundred and fifty thousand dollar range of that transportation benefit district money being put into those local roads and hopefully converting some of these substandard roads into much better roads for transportation. A couple of traffic, I guess, hiccups, issues, things to be aware of. We put this out on social media lately up on Wallace and Spring Road at the intersection. City crews are working on that traffic light as we speak to install another head on each side that would give dedicated turn line. As you know, that just, when it goes green, you wait for time, right? And opportunity to make your left-hand turn. These lights would allow for dedicated turn lines in each direction. So These lights would would allow for dedicated turn lanes in each direction. So uh city staff have been working on that. We have a contractor coming in that has to work in the cabinets and finish up wiring and things like that. So we'll see some disruptions over the next few days um with that work. We're also waiting um the contractor that's going to install the, I think it's a twelve-inch high-pressure water main, right? From essentially the Y M C A for reference uh to the Olympic Heights subdivision there on Alpine Way. That is a new high-pressure water main extension. It's gonna provide for more capacity and pressure uh along that corridor up into that new housing development, that new subdivision. So Parker Pacific, the contractor has been doing some potholing the last week or so, last few days. They dig a hole, they find out where the utilities are, what the uh conditions are of the soil, so they can better plan for those improvements. Um that will certainly impact that intersection. We're trying to time that appropriately, at least through through the intersection itself at Wallace and Spring uh for next week over spring break. But there's a couple of things that are still waiting to be completed. So um just a heads up, we'll we'll notify the public again if uh if anything changed, but please uh it's on our website, on our Twitter page as well. Uh the last thing I have for you tonight, on April twenty-ninth, we have scheduled a forum uh for potential candidates that would be putting their name in the hat for uh the one of the four council seats here in the Civic Center. Six to eight P M. It's kind of a City of Shelton Government one-on-one, if you will, uh covering our form of government, the role of the council and the role of departments and the services that we provide our communities to better inform the individuals that might be filing the week of May fifth, the following week. So we invite others to come out uh join us here in the Civic Center on the main room, uh six o'clock till till we're done. That's all I have tonight.
Council, I have any items for discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you and a shout out to the human society for coming. And I really want to look at our proposal, on your proposal. And we spend over two hundred and eight thousand dollars a year for animal control in the city. And within the past four years, that's almost a million dollars. Um unfortunately, we only have to spend a fraction of that on our homeless human population. Um as I've been pointing out tonight as well. So um I just wanted to let you know that I'd really want to see us move forward with the working with the human society and get these people, get these dogs rehomed at ninety-seven percent. But I want to also remind the council and everyone out there that we had uh we had a session about a month ago about all the rehoming that was happening with our human population as well. And that they're also being rehomed by at the shelter. And we also had three more people online who wanted to speak, but they were somehow cut off. So I want to say that there's rehoming going on and there's a lot of care and concern in the community. And I just want to make sure that we are caring as concerning as we are as a human society. So I'm looking forward to working with you, looking at your proposal and to find solutions for rehoming, not just the dogs, but all the people as well. So thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Our next study session on the eighth of April, we will talk about a campaign when you decide to gate. Following down our next regular meeting, we will have presentation financial status. Resolution on M B R headworks upgrade design, work order on both for Creeksuit by the past. Upgraded by the time. I have an item for everything we talked about today under business. So our next meeting is April fifteenth at six P M. We also have this April eighth at six P M. This meeting is adjourned at six.